Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, June 18th. At a minute or two past 9:00 a.m., we'll call the Wright County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's good to see you again. A good turnout here as we recognize the dedication of employees here in Wright County and their service to the citizens and the time that they've committed to this organization. So that's our first item on the agenda here today. We're gonna begin. Board members want to come out and help pass out the certificates and mugs. We'll be calling up our years of recognition of services.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, we are recognizing years of service for those with anniversary dates between April 1st and June 30th of this year. So we'll start with the five-year recipients. Our first is Aaron Tavoris from the Sheriff's Office. Taylor Hammond from Court Services. Robert Broatz from the Highway Department. Leah Woods from the Sheriff's Office. Chad Hadley from Parks and Recreation. John Preglar from Facilities. Nathaniel Johnson from Highway. Tyler Niebert from the Sheriff's Office. David Lambertz from the Sheriff's Office. Richard Ward from the Sheriff's Office. Next is Stephen Boyce-Cleare from Highway. And Ashley Gariga from Finance and Taxpayer Service. And that concludes our five-year recipients. Moving on to 10-year recipients, we have one this time. That is Nate Byrell from the Surveyors Department. Moving on to 15-years of service, Jeffrey McMackens from the Sheriff's Office. Mary Jo Fallhuber from the Recorder's Office. And next will be Sarah Opey from Health and Human Services. All right. Concludes our 15-year recipients. Moving on to 20-years of service, Robert Mossman from the Sheriff's Office. Jill Van Busicum from Health and Human Services. And next is Teresa Arvik from Health and Human Services. Okay, that concludes the 20-year recipients. We have a 30-year recipient this time. Tamara Chiglow with Health and Human Services. And we have a 40-year recipient, Kelly Day from Recorder. All right, that concludes our quarterly awards. How about a hand for all of our recipients? Thank you all for attending today and recognizing your fellow employees for their years of service. I'd like to thank you, as always, for the great work you do for the county and the citizens of the county. I know we can have some great days and some challenging days, but never forget the work that we do impacts the public. So, thank you for that. Thank you for years of service.
All right. Well, thank you. I can give everybody a moment here for those of you that don't wish to attend the rest of the meeting. We'll take just a short second here.
Mr. Chair, since there's some Highway Department folks here, I just want to recognize whoever was here and on that project on County Road 30. Thanks for the quick work and the long days. Much appreciated. My phone didn't ring, for better or worse. That's always good. So, thanks to Nate and the crew there.
So, moving on to today's agenda, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes. We have quite a grouping of minutes from the 6-3 Committee of the Whole for Public Health, the 6-3 Committee of the Whole on the Sheriff's Contract Rate, and the approval of the minutes from the County Board Meeting from June 4th, and the approval of the minutes from the Committee of the Whole for the Recycling Center Project, as well as the County Board Workshop on 6/11. We can approve them collectively, individually. I'll stand for any modifications.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a change on letter E, the County Board Workshop. And it'd be, the both changes are on page 2. First one, the second line should be amount that the board would be asking for from the FBI. It references something else there. And then, on the second paragraph, same page, after, "On outside attorney fees." That Catchmark confirmed that any improvements in equipment usage that Mr. Chair referenced is unsubstantiated. And that's all I had.
All right. Is there any other modifications? Either I'll stand for a motion to approve of minutes, either collectively or individually.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve them collectively. And I also just want to say a big thank you for staff for all those minutes. That was a lot of meetings, and they were very well done. Thank you.
All right, motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. Minutes are approved unanimously. Today's agenda, is there anything that needs to be added or modified from today's agenda?
I have nothing to add, sir.
All right, if not, I'll stand for a motion to approve today's agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right. Today's agenda is approved unanimously. Today's consent agenda, would anyone like to remove anything from today's consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Catchmark.
Letter C1, the request to fill the Environmental Health Inspector position. Just a brief discussion.
Okay, C1. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull C2 as well.
C2, rezoning request on C2. And I see Barry's in the room. Okay, is there any other items? If not, I'll stand for a motion to approve the remaining agenda items, and we'll place the two polled items here right prior to timed agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark. Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right, consent agenda is approved with the removal of C1 and C2. At this time, C1. Commissioner Catchmark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I talked to administration briefly ahead of time on this. Just referring to the job description that talks about receives and investigates complaints regarding potential violations of environmental standards. There's interest across the board, it seems like, in this area and the follow-up of these complaints. So, my question is if if there's any planned changes with this staff to address them any differently than we have in the past. For any staff that's here, probably Barry, because he's requesting the position. Thanks, Barry, for coming in.
Yeah. Well, code enforcement is always in a bit of flux. So, yeah, there's gonna be potential changes coming up. Exactly what those are is yet to be determined. That's part of the hiring of the Assistant Administrator position was to work on processes and procedures, both within our office and with other offices on processing of code enforcement.
Okay. And I would just ask, because we do have that Ordinance Amendment Committee that we utilize at where we can. I think it's a good thing to have for a couple commissioners to sit down. So if anything comes up in that area, I just want to call attention that that committee is there, that with this new position, as you say, that they're gonna be looking at that. So, that's all I had. Thank you. Look forward to working with you and the new staff, if you can find one timely.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll comment on that one as well. I just want to thank, congratulate Scott Deckert for moving up promotion to Assistant Zoning Administrator.
I would've brought him today, but he doesn't officially start until next Monday.
Well, congratulations to Scott. And then, Mr. Chair, the second.
While I'm here.
Yes.
While you're here. I just wanted to make a comment on each of those rezoning. For the Richard Davis one, I just want to note that the SWCD did have comments in there, and it looks like it was really good discussion and everything went well and is recommended to approve. And I agree with that for that rezoning. The second one, for the Silver Creek Township, I see it's a unanimous vote, too. I just wanted to note that SWCD did not comment on that. That included wetlands on there and a shoreline district with that redevelopment into an expansion of the business zoning along that 94 corridor by the Hasty Truck Stop. So, I just wanted to note that it would be great to see a consistent feedback when there's wetlands on there. And I also understand that in the development process, that will certainly be addressed. So, thank you.
And actually, in the development process, there'll be two stages. So, in the case of a rezoning, they'll be able to comment on the subdivision stage. And when they come in to apply for whatever use they want on it, they'll have the ability to comment on that. We probably see, those are the two spots where we see the most SWCD comment, is on subdivision to make sure that we're protecting wetlands through where property lines go. And then, in the development process, this is B2, so there's high water use or high hard surface. So, they'll likely comment regarding any type of drainage concerns that they have with the proposed use.
Certainly. And just with Lock Lake being right there and all the development already, the residential piece on there, putting businesses right next to it. It's just something I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, minutes reflect that. There's plenty of neighbors there.
Yep. Thanks.
Very good. At this time, I'll stand for a motion to approve C1 and C2.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, same sign. All right. C1 and C2 are approved unanimously. Now, coming up to our 9:15 timed agenda item, I see Heather making her way up to the podium. We are adopting a resolution for the Participation in the Minnesota Council on Local Results in Innovations Comprehensive Performance Measurement Program. That's a mouthful.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We're here today to ask for you to adopt the resolution. This is the sixth year we have applied for this, and it gives us, in addition to giving us 21,000 roughly in revenue, it exempts the county from levy limits. Had we need it.
Mr. Chair, so if you really read into that, that means that the sky is the limit for a levy.
I said, if we need it.
But that could be on the lower end or the higher end, right?
It's supposed to be the higher end.
Oh, okay. All right, for what it's worth, thank you.
Any discussions? So, I appreciate your efforts in doing this work and the reporting that's required with it. So, with that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion. And I do appreciate, those metrics are good that you had to put together. It's holistically good input for us to have as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich. Second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution vote, Commissioner Catchmark?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes, you name it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Alan is waiting so very patiently for his opportunity to come forward. We have the request to adopt the Maple Lake Shop Budget and Authorized Contract Signatures. The bids have come in. They're included in the packet. Alan?
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Here to request authorization to move forward with contract signatures on the Maple Lake Highway Shop. We went to bid on those on May 21st. In the packet, you have the bids that were submitted, as well as a budget with the selected bids to move forward to contract on. The second piece of that request is to select alternate 1. It's the additional section, 5,000 square feet of bay. That was the original scope. However, not knowing kind of what we'd see for bids, we decided to bid it as an alternate, and numbers came back in pretty good shape. So, we request moving forward with that. And then, just kind of an explanation, an alternate 2. We put a new well on the site, and depending on the results of the flow rates on that well, we'll drive alternate 2 if we need it or not. Alternate 2 is for fire suppression tank and system in case we need a holding tank to supply the building. If the well flow rates are good, we will not need alternate 2. We just bid it as a part of that process, so we knew what we were getting into if the well did not meet the flow rates that we're looking for, for the fire suppression. So, the request is to move forward with base bid, contract, selection of alternate 1, and then authorization if we need alternate 2 to move forward with that if the results are needed or not. With that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Board members.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank Alan for this whole process and breaking out those alternates for us and as needed. How soon would you know if that fire suppression would be needed?
They were on-site, started the well. If it would ever stop raining, we could probably get a little better access to do the flows. I haven't heard if they were able to get in there end of the week. I'm assuming not early this week. They haven't been there, so I'll have to check in again. I think within a week we'll know. One to two weeks, we'll kind of know what they're seeing for results. They got, I understood they got the casing in the location, but they hadn't done any testing yet, from the last I heard.
Thank you.
Unless you know different, Nate? Have you seen any other activity?
Mr. Chair, if, do you have more questions?
Well, I was just gonna make a comment that myself and another commissioner sat in during the bidding open process. It was a very intense moment. So, I really feel that you got the best bids out there because it was very intense, and you could see that the numbers that they put forth were very, very tight. So, very interesting process to be through.
Just one question, and Nate will probably be able to answer it. That additional bay. The price is good on it, but my question being is, are we, is this 10, 15, 20 years to needing that bay? And with it being tempered, will we be losing the value of that additional bay in utility costs over? If we don't need it for 20 years, 20 years of heating it, we're probably not saving any money by building it now, but.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. In my opinion, it depends how fast the county's gonna continue to grow. With the design of this shop, we'll be able to position six routes out of there. We'll be able to consolidate the French Lake Building, which will reduce equipment and material needed on that site. We'll be able to bring that to Maple Lake. It'll increase efficiencies in the Maple Lake area for routes. We strive to get our routes done in four hours. When I say routes, I'm talking plow routes. Try to get them done in four hours. So, as the population continues to grow from the east to the west, this positions us to be able to react quicker to situations. Put six routes up there. We have three right now. I'll take one route from French Lake when that shop is consolidated. Through attrition, that employee's set to retire this fall. We'll move that route to the Maple Lake Shop when that's done. And we will service the needs of the Maple Lake, Anadale, and surrounding areas out of that shop. This hub would be our main highway hub for kind of the western half of the county. We'll be able to store more equipment in the additional bays. It'll enable me to put a loader up there, a skid loader, additional equipment to react to both snow emergencies and summer issues, culverts. I could have a backhoe sitting up there, a trailer. So, operationally, we'll put the space in a good use. And I know even it takes some pressure off the Buffalo and some of the sheds around here for some of our storage needs for not only highway, but other departments as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couple questions. How many staff will be working out of that building once it's?
It'd be six full-time plow drivers. And then, I envision at least one spare truck, a blade, a loader, a couple one tons. So, that 12-bay shop is already getting closer to not capacity, but it leaves us like one or two bays open right now without the alternate. With the alternate, that gives us two extra bays. So, it gives us a little time. So, and as Wright County continues to grow, you know, I think there's no better time than now to maximize on some of the pricing we have.
Yeah, the pricing's good. And based on your justification, it doesn't sound like it's just gonna sit idle. So, it's fair enough. Yep.
Mr. Chair, one more comment, a couple more, maybe. Could you just say how long? This has been programmed in the CIP for a number of years.
It has been. Bad guess, five to eight. It was before I took over as superintendent. A lot of these discussions happened with previous boards and with the consolidating the French Lake Shop, or do you rebuild that shop? Everything was weighed out. There used to be two routes out of that shop. We already moved one to the Cokato area and have continued the same level of service for that region. And so, this has been something that's been in discussion for a number of years.
And there was even talk of where it might be.
Exactly. Yeah, we looked in the Anadale area. Couldn't find a suitable site there. We looked in, ideally would've been an industrial park, so it wouldn't have the well questions and the extra holding tank. But we couldn't obtain anything like that, so we decided to stay where we are. Maple Lake location is a great location for servicing out of those six routes. I envision two going south of 55, two going west towards the South Haven area, and then two kind of working, kind of like, so that's three. I got one up in Clearwater, and then two towards Monticello. And part of how we route our trucks, too, is to optimize commuter traffic for your Monday through Friday traffic. We like our main lines and, you know, our schools, our businesses, where our commuter traffic is flowing. We like to get those roads open first within that four-hour window, so they're treated and ready to go by 6:00 a.m. generally on a Monday morning commute or a weekday commute.
All right, thank you. And how many miles of plowing will come out of that shop with all those routes?
Oh, that's a pretty good question. There'll be, it could be to the 500 range. I'd have to look it up for you. We have 1,000, 1,040 lane miles through all 21 routes that we have in the county, so.
So, that would be a lot.
Yeah, I know some of those routes in Maple Lake are already in the 90-mile range. One of them that was in French Lake is 100-mile range. So, part of this, too, bringing six routes up there, we'll be able to take a little of the pressure off of those routes. So, I had a little bit of the eastern routes to the west cover that. As Otsego has expanded and Buffalo has expanded, we have concentrated our forces there. And I think now we see that our reaction time there is maybe in that three-and-a-half-hour range. So, we can start. So we can start sliding some of our resources to the west to better utilize our staff while keeping our headcount neutral.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for all that information.
Good morning, Nate. Just a question, do you see any need to keep that French Lake property once this one opens or not?
I don't. Honestly, if we are gonna keep it, I think Alan can speak to if it needs work or not, but as far as highway operations, I do not. I think we can run out of our Kokato and Maple Lake shops and it'll be changes, but we can be efficient doing it.
Okay. Probably a future EDA project.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the bids and the alternate one and the alternate two contingent the need based on the flow rates. So we approve it with that contingency, but I'd entertain a motion for such.
So moved. I'll second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Board.
All right. At this time, Chad's turn to come forward here. First is gonna be adopt a resolution to enter into a local bridge replacement program grant agreement with MnDOT.
Which one was first?
The MnDOT, CASA II.
Okay. All right. Chairman, Vets, Commissioners, this first one is our joint project with Stearns County to replace the, our CASA II bridge headed into Fairhaven. And this is our grant agreement for MnDOT, which allows us to receive those grant funds, so.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve this grant agreement. All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dietrich. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution vote, Commissioner Shane.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. Next would be adopt a resolution to enter into a local bridge replacement program with MnDOT for Eastwood Avenue.
Yes, this is the Eastwood Avenue Franklin Township Town Bridge Replacement Project that we're the fiscal agent for. And basically this just allows us to receive those funds on behalf of the township.
All right. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution vote, I vote aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Chad, for the information. All right?
And then we have one more, right? That I've got?
We have it under Items for Consideration Board, but if you.
Oh, that was under consideration. That was approved. Okay. That was awarding the contract for Franklin Township, so that was good. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chad, before you sit down, any updates on 35 there?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
We'll find out how today goes. If today goes well with the weather and prepping the road, we're gonna probably pave it tomorrow out of a different plant.
So it looked like it was open still this morning? Because I know that was in consideration, right? Okay.
Right now it's open and they're working on it now. So one of those culmination of confluence of impacts that led to that, you know? Broken down plant, bad weather and a lot of traffic, so. But they're working hard. They wanna, they wanna.
For sure.
They wanna get out of here and move on to their next project, so, yeah. All right.
Mr. Chair, one more comment? I just want to say thank you. Chad's been working with me in the Highway Department with the Sugar Lake Access with the, the DNR had closed our main access on the south end and for safety reasons, he's helping, you know, make it a little safer on that north end. It's a smaller access with not a lot of room right next to the county road, so.
Yep. Very similar one on Braddock here, if you haven't been out to the Sugar Lake one for a busy, busy lake, so.
So thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is the Items for Consideration. First would be Administration just set a time and date for a Transportation Committee of the Whole. The list of topics is included there. And I guess, we suggested date would be July 11th at 9:00 AM. Does members have their schedules in front of them?
That's what I'm going first. I mean to be here. It's gotten the lip.
It's up to you.
Works for me, Mr. Chair.
All right. Works for.
What's the date on that? July what?
11th.
11th. It would be a Thursday.
At what time?
11, or 9:00 AM.
Yeah, that works. Do we have an EDA? Maybe.
We don't, well, the EDA is a question. That's on that Monday.
No, I will not be here, Caitlin, just so that if it is decided, I'm, yeah.
I do have a meeting and that, I may be.
If we're missing two, then we gotta look at a different time. Would we go to the 10th? Do we want to move a day earlier, that Wednesday?
The 15th after the EDA meeting?
The 15th doesn't work for me. I have other conflicts and Commissioner Shane has got conflicts. So I would say if you're gonna look at it from a different day, you'd wanna look at the 10th or the 9th, 10th.
We're in here after leadership or something?
Yeah, we can do that.
Chad?
The 10th, we do have that drain. No, that's not that. The 10th work for you, Chad?
The 10th morning doesn't work for me.
What about new, or after the leadership on the 9th June? The 10th is open.
10th is open. 10th, no?
Unless it's afternoon.
The 10th.
Or early, early.
Yeah. Anytime on the 10th?
So you would like 11:30, 12 on the 10th, one? No?
It'd have to be like a 3:00.
Oh, really?
I know.
The 9th then?
Chad?
Yes, we don't work after 3:00.
I feel like we picked the 11th because Sarah was available.
Oh.
9th except for the quarterly leadership meeting, which is at 10:30.
After that? After that? Do we have a lot on the agenda?
No, we can go, we can go 1:00 or 12:00 on the 9th. I don't see any.
1:00.
12.
12.
12.
So are we doing the 9th or the 12th here? I'm either.
12:00 on the 9th.
12, okay.
Is that right? 12:00 on the 9th?
12:00 on the 9th. Sounds good.
No lunch.
And then with that, I'll entertain a motion to set a Transportation Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, July 9th at 12:00 noon.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I think we chose the 11th was one reason was the Fourth of July week to make sure we have all the support materials ready and posted ahead of time, but we'll do our best to get that before then even.
I'll make a motion for that meeting then.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now moving on to the recommendations from the, sorry, the Public Health Meeting on June 3rd. That would be informational only, so I don't necessarily, we already approved the minutes, so there is no action that's necessary to be taken on the Committee of the Whole for Public Health. The second one would be the Transportation or the Committee of the Whole Regarding Sheriff's Contract Rate. There is the two recommendations. One would be the recommendation for, to move forward with the contract rates of 110 and 115 for 25, 25, 2026 for the contracted cities. And then there was the SRO rate of 60,840 for the 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve those, both of those recommendations.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Shane. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanna, just comment from my two cities, especially the city of Albertville. I heard from every one of those council members and the mayor, their disappointment because they thought this was gonna be a year of no increases, so I just wanted to make that, pass that, that on, their disappointment.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes for one. All right. Next would be the recommendations from the Committee of the Whole on June 4th regarding the household hazardous waste. There's a number of recommendations, one being proceed with the Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Center in construction, specifications bidding in construction, project demolition of all buildings except for the hangar, the County Attorney's Office review of any internal loans and with repayment to the county reserves for score funds. Finance Administration will work with the Sheriff's Office to discuss K-9 training services and RFP process as well as the, the funding as stated below in the recommendations. With that, I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Shane.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think I said my piece at the, at the meeting, but I support this project wholeheartedly. My only concern is, is that we were moving forward with it when we were considering budget constraints that we had conversations about previously, but I do support this project.
All right. No other discussion? We have a motion and we have a second? No?
Did we get a second?
Yep. Second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Motion passes unanimous. All right. Next would be to approve the adoption and recommendations from the County Board Workshop. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve all of the recommendations that need to be motioned except for number one.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the recommendations for the FBI Training Center Agreement, the Wellness Program, the Building Inspector Position Replacement Procurement Analyst Position Request, the Pass Through Grants and Administrative Fees, and the scheduled meetings as necessary. And the Commissioner updates by Commissioner Catchmark. Do we have a second? Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if they understand the motion.
There's a motion to approve all of the recommendations minus the first one, and the first one he wants to discuss it separately. So I've got.
That was not mentioned though, that he wanted to discuss it separately.
Well, it was all but one.
We're gonna discuss it.
It stands by itself.
Yeah, it stands by itself. We have to discuss it.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a second by Commissioner Holland. Thank you for requesting the clarification, Commissioner Catchmark. All right. So we have a motion to approve recommendations one or two through eight, but the motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Recommendations two through eight are approved unanimously. Recommendation one, the Historical Society Performance Measurement Presentation and Appropriation. The recommendation was to provide the second 2024 funding allocation for the Wright County Historical Society. Commissioner Catchmark.
Well, I'll just, I'll wait for the first and the second and I'll just have a tidbit in the middle and go from there. So I didn't mean to cause stage fright with the other motion I made, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I will second and I, I was just in a state of shock. I didn't, yeah. It was shock. I didn't know there was an issue, so I'm interested to hear.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just gonna stick with the same point that I've made for a year, maybe plus, but I would be in favor of funding the Historical Society operations for their three busiest days, which would come at a savings of approximately $120,000 in taxpayer dollars, give or take, whatever the finance crew would come up with. So I'm not gonna be in favor of, of the full-blown appropriation, but I just, I just wanted to add that for the record. That's all I have.
All right. So with that, is there any other comments? I appreciate Sally and her team and the wonderful information that they provided for us at that workshop, as well as the enhanced efforts that they've made to bring what they do to light to a lot of the citizens in the county. I think it's one of those organizations that people don't realize what they have until it was gone or realize until they need it. So it, they do a fantastic job on a very, very tight budget, so I thank them very much.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to add in on that because within this last month, I've had some issues with some abandoned cemeteries and so they've been working with us to try and get that because we have war veterans in the cemetery. So we were utilizing her in that aspect as well and she is looking at her budget and stuff again, so I appreciate the fine work on that as well.
Chairman Veg, they were featured last night on Channel 5 News, so that was quite exciting. I didn't get to see it. I'm gonna wait and see it, link it up today, but they, they're pretty proud that they were featured.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you repeat? Well, it was for a POW camp that was at, at the fairgrounds.
Yep, it was regarding the POW camp at the fairgrounds during the World War II. Yep. Very.
Interesting.
Great work by Sally and her team. So with that, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes for one. All right. Moving on to Item C for Items for Consideration would be to award contract number 24-08 to Eastwood Avenue Bridge in Franklin Township to Kramer North America LLC. Ready? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next, at this time, we will be moving into a closed session, and I will turn this over to Attorney Kreiser to determine under what statute we are going into closed session with.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We're gonna be moving into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B to discuss pending litigation under the attorney-client confidentiality provision. This is in regards to the case of Spore Leader versus State of Minnesota et al., Court File 62CV 233405, and after we conclude, we may take action.
Okay. Thank you. Are we remaining in here to do this closed session, or are we going out?
I think it's easiest to go up to the back room.
Okay, so then, those of you who can stay in here, we're going out, so if you don't want to leave, you don't have to. All right?